Well, good evening, everyone. We call this meeting, July 18th, to order. We're gonna begin with invocation. If you have an agenda, your agenda says Pastor or Apostle Norbert Simmons is gonna be here. Pastor Simmons is not here tonight, but we have a very fine substitute in his place, Elder Johnson. So, as soon as we do the... Well, just come on up now, Elder, if you would, and let's do the pledge and, I mean, do the invocation, and then we'll do the pledge. If you would, please stand. And he's with Deeper Life Church.
Let's all bow our heads. Mostly turning now, that's the Father God, as we come before thy presence in the name of thy Son, Jesus. God, we just, first of all, God, just give you thanks, oh God, for life, strength, and health, Father God, and for the activity of our very limbs, God. Lord, as we come, God, in this meeting on tonight, Father God, you say, God, that the king's heart, God, is in your hands. And Father, as we come, God, to gather for this meeting, Father God, we pray, God, that you will mold the hearts, oh God, that the leaders, oh God, of this community. Father, we pray, God, that these decisions that they make, oh God, will be those, oh God, that will benefit, oh God, the whole community. God, we thank you for what you're gonna do for these men and women, in the name of thy Son, Jesus Christ, God. These and all blessings, we count it done, for thy glory. Everybody say, "Amen."
Amen.
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 Elder Johnson, we thank you for coming and praying with us and for us. With that, we're gonna pledge allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
With that, we'll have a roll call, though, ma'am. Here.
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 President.
We're all here.
With that, you've got the approval of the amendments for June 6th and June 27th for approval.
Move to adopt.
Any discussion? Or if I ever say aye. Next, we're gonna move to public comment period. If anybody in the audience would like to speak for up to three minutes, now would be your opportunity. All y'all have to do is come up, give us your name and your address, and you have three minutes to speak. Would anybody like to speak? Anybody like to speak? Yes, ma'am. How are you tonight?
Good, how are you?
Give the sweet young lady your name and address, even though we know who you are.
Good evening. My name is Caroline Kukas. I am the host of the Community Peace Walk that is gonna be occurring on Friday, July 22nd, from 4:00 to 6:30. I would like to personally invite all of you to come and attend, and I would like to state my reason for having this community event. I'm sure, like me, I turn on my TV, or I look on my art, if I'm reading, like on CNN or something, and I see shootings, or something cruel happening, and I was personally disturbed about the shootings of Alton Sterling and Flando Castro, as I'm sure you know about, and even right after that, the Dallas shootings in this past week with France, and just a couple of days ago in Louisiana. And I think it's a time for us to come as a good community, and show our support, and show that we care to the rest of the world, because, you know, difference, a difference, if we wanna make a difference, starts with us. And I actually looked in Raleigh or Wilmington for, you know, a bigger city, and I was thinking that they would have something, right? And I sadly couldn't find anything, so I was like, "Why don't I do something?" So, that's what I wanted you, and I want my community to come together, and I would love your support. And, yeah, thank you for your time.
Hey, Caroline, do me a favor.
Yes.
Chaco, raise your hand. You see that nice young lady right there? She's the head of our community affairs, and we were in a meeting this past Friday, and there's somebody else in the meeting that was saying they would like to kinda do the same thing you are, so we mentioned, we knew what you were doing.
Yes, sir.
So, we mentioned that to them. If you will, talk to Chaco, because if we can get all y'all doing the same thing, it'll be better for everybody.
Yes, sir, I agree.
So, if you can talk to her, see if there is...
Okay.
And this was on July 22nd.
Yes.
From 4:00 to 6:00, right?
Yes, 4:00 to 6:30, but yes.
Okay, 4:00 to 6:30.
And how is that getting publicized?
We actually have passed out flyers. I made a Facebook event, and a lot of my friends that I've talked to about this, we are posting on Instagram and social media. So, if you go downtown, you'll see our flyer. If you go to Starbucks, you see our flyer, and if you wanna like us on Facebook, well, we're there, so, through social media and things like that.
Is newspaper publicizing?
I actually was, I got a voicemail from her, and they wanna talk to me about an article, maybe, in the News Argus. I have to follow up more about that, but...
Well, you see that kinda sweet lady on the right, that's your News Argus lady.
Oh, nice to meet you.
You get with her too, okay?
Okay.
And Melissa, maybe we can post it on the city Facebook, do our stuff too.
Yeah, I would, I would love that.
Okay.
Thank you, guys, for your time, I appreciate it.
Thank you for your...
I have a question.
Yes.
How you doing?
Yes, hi.
I'm so happy what you're trying to do.
Thank you.
Is there gonna be a route in some of the districts, or is it just gonna be on the city?
Um, we, it's right, well, yes, we, I got the permit for downtown. We're gonna go, from what I understand, we're gonna go, we're gonna meet at Cornerstone Commons, and then we're gonna go from Mulberry Street, and then back to South Center Street, where, and then end up at Centerstone, or, um...
Compost.
Yes, yes.
Cornerstone.
Yes, that.
Up and down.
Oh, no, that's fine. But that's where we're gonna be.
Thank you, I appreciate it.
Yeah, thank you, guys.
Thank you. All right. Would anybody else like to speak?
I do. I would.
Yes, ma'am. Come on, if you would, give Melissa your name and address, please, ma'am.
Good evening.
Good evening. How are you guys doing?
Good.
Um, I wanted to ask a question, basically, to all of you, especially you, the mayor and the city council, or the city manager. In wake of the recent events that have happened in our nation with the Alton Sterling and the Fidel Castro, what is the city of Goldsboro doing to prevent these events from happening in this city? And those type of things from happening here? What are we doing to prevent that from happening in this, this town?
I can tell you my opinion anywhere, okay?
We do, we're doing, we talk about it a lot, I promise you, we talk about it a lot, especially the police chief, the manager, Chaco, we talk about, we, we're all kinda with the law enforcement, and so a lot, a lot of the pastoral folks, we're trying, we've got a group called Our Community Cares. We've already put on one event, we've got another event scheduled for August 6th, and basically, we've got a pretty broad group that basically anybody can come to, that we're trying to have dialogue. We're just trying to communicate, to talk, if there are problems. We have, we've got problems, we gotta be able to talk about the problems, and we gotta be able to face the problems and be able to talk one-on-one and keep... So, I think our biggest thing is communication. We're trying to get our message out better. Chaco is working really hard, trying to do that. I think the manager does some of that. Let's pray that never happens in Golds... I think Goldsboro's in a better place than that, but I don't ever wanna take it for granted, and I don't think anybody up here does.
Of course.
And we don't. You know, we work a lot on that. That's the best answer I can give you, if anybody has better ideas or thinks that we're not doing things.
Well, I'm open to hear from any and everybody.
They can let us know.
Yes, sir. Thank you so much.
I spoke with Scott and Chief Wes last week.
Yes.
About, you know, community policing, and I think that that would, it's not gonna solve every issue, but I think that it would help the citizens and the police have a better relationship. I think it would help the citizens and the police have a better relationship, so hopefully some of these problems don't happen, you know? I think that's something that we have to look at moving forward, you know? The better relationship you have, the less likely something will happen, you know, between the citizens and, and the police. So, Scott and Chief Wes are coming up with a plan for that, to put that in action, so hopefully we'll see some results from it.
And I've also spoken with Chief Wes in regards to just being more community-aware and working with the community. I know recently, we've had two officers, Mr. Officer Mike Park, and I can't think of his partner's name, but they were off of Madison Avenue, and they were playing with children and trying to reach outreach to them.
I saw that.
And I've spoken with him on several occasions, and trying to help him recruit and go through training purposes, and how to help with training for the officers, to make them more aware of communities' thoughts and needs and things like that. So, me and him have, usually have a conversation once or twice a week, so, it is everything from, I know from my standpoint, and the rest of the council and the mayor, we're doing everything we can to try to keep any thing from that happening here in the city.
And I also wanna recognize the officers, they were in West Haven, and they were interacting with the children there, they were playing basketball. I mean, that's where it starts, just interacting, letting them know that, you know, we don't wanna intimidate you, and that's something that we all address, you know? Especially being a black man, I kinda can understand, you know, what the black community goes through, so, we're working, we're working, and I think that, that the law enforcement here, they're, they're starting to hear, we say, they know it's a big problem, it's a big issue, and we can kinda show them, from our perspective, how we think it can help, so...
All right. Well, thank you so much.
But I wanna leave this with you.
Okay.
We don't have all the answers. You know, we're, we're open, everyone in all this is open to conversation. If, if somebody feels like there's something that I'm not doing, or Councilman Williams, whoever, you're more than welcome to talk to us.
Okay, okay.
I mean, and we want to be sure the community understands that this is a team.
Where, where is, where is the, the information for that, that you were talking about, where you...
Chaco.
Chaco. I have to get it from her, and it's publicized on the city website?
City's Facebook page.
City's Facebook page, so we can have people come out and...
Absolutely.
All righty. Well, thank you, guys, so much.
Thank you. Have a great night. Thanks for coming.
Thank you.
Would anybody else like to speak?
Good evening, sir.
Good evening. Mayor.
How are you?
Council members, city manager. I saw you last night at a community event.
You did?
That impressed me.
Most praying I've seen in a long time.
Some of, some of the others were there also, but I was glad to see your face there. I'm coming, just representing the Goldsboro-Wayne County branch of the NAACP. To say that, you know, we're, we are aware that there are events, the Peace Walk, and so we held back on what we were trying to do with this community, but we do want to make a statement about not just what's going on nationwide, it's almost, it's worldwide, really. A lot of violence, and so, we know that in our community, there's a lot of violence and crime, and so we want to, we want everybody to know that it's not just certain lives, all lives matter.
Amen.
And we wanna make a statement about that, that all lives, because our organization has been set up to, you know, demonstrate and push for the civil rights and justif, justice of all people. It doesn't matter, and so, just because you're police, or you're an individual citizen, you are still someone who deserves to have a right to live in this land without all of the current events that we see going on. And so I just wanted to bring that to your attention. We're currently planning some community events to bring unity to our community, and we will be getting back with you to give more specific information, and basically, we just stood back because we understand that the young lady who just came up is having an event, and it's no sense in having two or three events at one time. Maybe you could join them together, but we feel like it's something that, that needs to be not just a one-time event, this is something that needs to be ongoing. And so, in our plans, we will be making a way, or planning a way, to invite you, the police departments, county sheriff, office, everyone to the table, because we do care about our community, and it's our community.
Yes, sir. Absolutely.
Thank you, sir.
Well, I will leave you. We would love to see you and your group there on the 22nd too, because we want a collective group of our community there. We, I don't wanna take over her deal, but if we're gonna do it, the more people, the better it is.
You, you may, you may not be aware, but during this week, this is our national, the NAACP, this is the week that we have our national convention, so a lot of our people are away.
Right, that's my...
And so that's why we have stepped back also, but we will.
And I will also leave with you, we're here.
Okay.
So, if, if, all you got is, talk to us.
Absolutely, we will.
Okay. Thank you, sir. Have a great night. Thank you.
Thank you, all.
Anybody else like to talk?
Yes, sir.
Yes, sir, how you doing?
I'm good, sir, how are you?
Wonderful. Richard Taylor, 1016 South Taylor Street.
Good evening.
Good evening. Good evening, Mayor Allen, City Manager Stevens, and all the distinguished members of the commission. First, I wanna say that I am extremely, extremely impressed with, with the work that the city has done in the downtown area. It's been a while since I've seen something like this in Goldsboro, so I wanna, you know, extend my gratitude for that. And with that said, you know, as I was traveling down here from my residence on Taylor Street, heading north of Taylor, making a left, going west on Elm, and continuing on till about John Street, where I made the right, and then I moved over to Center Street. Now, during that small route, I saw maybe, I would say maybe 10, 15 properties that were probably boarded up, some vacant lots, some apartment buildings boarded up, even some, you know, some commercial buildings. And I was just wondering, I sort of like a two-pronged question. I was just wondering, I know, Mr. Allen, you are an astute businessman, so, you know, I know the money is always the bottom line.
I like you.
So, you know, with, with that being said, you know, considering all the work that's been done downtown, what, if anything, is the city or the planners doing to try to do something with those properties, whether it's bringing revenue in, or, you know, beautifying them? If anything, are they doing anything, you know, to try to, and not just that little route I'm talking about, but there are several areas in the city where you can just go around and be like, "Wow, that's, that place been empty for five years now." So, what, if anything, is the city planning on doing to try to beautify that area, and try to keep it on an even keel with, with the work that's being done in the downtown area? And if not, you know, are you guys willing to allow, you know, outside developers or outside investors to come in and, and try to do the same thing with these areas as you guys have so beautifully done with the downtown?
Okay. You on that?
Probably a longer conversation, but the short answer is, if there's private property out there, our ultimate responsibility and authority is to keep it safe. So, we can't take your house just because you don't maintain it. We ultimately can go through a process, and if you won't fix it, make it safe, we tear it down. And we do that in turn of about 100,000 to 200,000 in this year's budget, and each house is 5,000 to 10,000 to tear down. That, that ultimately is, I can't make you paint your house, I can't make you fix it so it's livable, and I can't take it from you, under our current law in North Carolina. But we can require you, if you don't do that, we can make it safe, and that's by ultimately tearing it down. So, that's, we talk about it a lot in terms of code enforcement, if you don't keep your yard up, we can make people cut their grass, you get into bushes, and how you're gonna landscape a bush, what you like may not be what I like, may not be what the mayor likes, so writing rules around that is difficult to say. You can't have a bush that's more than three feet high, or has to be maintained within some radius. You could write language like that, but it gets difficult. So, we are aware of it and working on trying to make that housing stock or businesses you're talking about better, working with the property owners, but it's really putting them on notice and asking them to do. Part of the downtown improvement was the idea that it would radiate out and make property owners want to reinvest in their property, and that is working some. It just has a long way to go. And would we accept outside investors? The answer is absolutely, but again, you've gotta get title to the property before you can just use it, 'cause we don't have the authority to just take it because it's in bad, in a state of disrepair.
So, a lot of those properties that I, that I saw that were boarded up are pretty much latent properties that the owners are not taking care of.
They're almost, we, we have published some lists, but we have lists, and we'd be happy to talk with you or any other group interested in an area, or developing, or how it works, or what's going on. We do have a staff that spends a lot of time with houses, trying to keep them safe. Most of them are privately owned, and the challenge is, you may wanna sell it, but you own it with two or three other people, because it's inherited property a lot, and they don't wanna sell. I mean, just gets very difficult, even with people that want to sell, but we do make a constant effort at trying to make that better as well.
And I think, and you need to expand on that, because Councilmember Williams, Councilmember Foster, we've all talked about it. I mean, it's not a new problem. And, and basically, the city in the past has been reactionary and not proactive, but the issue is, we can only do what he said. We can take the house and tear it down, and that's not a great answer either. You know, and then the other thing is, it usually is a three-to-five-year process, so for three to five years, it puts blight, and nobody wants to be next to blight. I don't care where you are in the city, you know, you don't want blight next to you. You know, one of the things that would be needed, if we could get a, figure out how to get owners to be more responsible for their property. And it's, but it's a huge, huge town, some of them are not in town, as Scott said, some of them have three to four, some of them don't have the money. I mean, you know, there's just several different reasons people don't do that, but, but it's a huge, and, and one thing we did do is, if you go to our website for the inspections department, we posted, I think it's the next 20 houses that are gonna get tore down, and we've done that for two reasons. One, hopefully the owner will see it and say, "I don't really wanna be on this website," and do something about it. Secondly, maybe somebody sees it, and knows the owner, and will approach him, and can get the house before it gets tore down, and does get rehabilitated, 'cause that does happen. I mean, that does happen, but it's, it's a huge far between.
So, it's on the website, some of those?
It's, it's, yeah, they're on, they're on the website.
All right, thanks a lot.
Thank you.
And I would push you back through, Chaco, as well, just 'cause she's a good point of contact, but, but I'd be happy to meet with you at any time as well, talk more about that.
Thanks a lot.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Would anybody else like to speak? Going once. Chaco's our go-to person.
To the mayor and city manager, thank y'all for even allowing us to come and speak. We thank you first of all. Second of all, my name is Evelyn Eason, and I propose the July 3rd, July 30th, for the prayer walk in Goldsboro, North Carolina. And that came to my heart because it's just like a funeral, when someone passes away in our, in our family. Everybody wants to come around then, we wants to come together, and my heart is, not just for that moment, but let it, for it to be a movement. We want this not to stop. You know, we can come together now, but why we can't do this all the time? So, my heart was for everybody to come together, not just blacks, not just the black church, but whites and Mexicans and Hispanics, whoever wants to come, we can come and pray that day. And it's not a, it's not a march, it's not a protest, it's not a rally, but it's a time to pray together. And that was, that's, that's my heart, for July 30th.
Where, where is it, ma'am?
We decided where?
It's gonna be, yes, it's gonna be at Dillett Middle School, well, we're starting there, at Dillett Middle School, and we're gonna go around to Slougham Street, to Elm, to Poplar, back to Slougham Street.
Time?
At 9:00.
9:00 in the morning?
Yes, it's on a Saturday morning. And we're like...
I know that she's, she's not gonna wanna hear this, but you need to talk to Chaco about that, too.
Yeah, I know.
Because she can, she can help you with the fire, she can help you get on our Facebook.
Yes, yes.
Because if we're gonna do it, let's have a big...
Yes.
Let's do it.
We want it to be a big turnout, we want everyone there, please, you guys, everyone, we want everyone to show up. It's gonna be big, and it's gonna be nice, and we want it to be effective, not just for that day, but forever.
Okay.
Okay.
All right, thank you very much.
Thank you so much.
Thanks for coming.
All right, you're welcome, thank you.
All right. Anyone, anyone else like to speak? Going once, going twice, the public comment period is closed, and we'll move to presentations. Fay, is that gonna be you?
Good evening, again, mayor and council. Tonight, we will be awarding our June Starwort recipients. Thanks to a generous anonymous donation that we've received. Throughout the year, we've been able to especially recognize our employees for the great jobs that they're doing that goes well above and beyond just their normal duties. And so, tonight, we have a group award, and we have a single award. Our first group award will be Mr. Eric Coates and Mr. Rod Pace, and the nominator is Ms. Karen Brashear, and I would like for her to just give you all just a brief summary of the nomination that was submitted, and then we'd like to ask the mayor to come and do the presentation, and of course, do a photo op. So, thank you. Karen, Eric, Rod.
Mr. Mayor, city council members, thank you for this opportunity to recognize some wonderful city employees, and Rod Pace, he's our compost facility superintendent, and this is Eric Coates, and he is a master mechanic. And this gentleman, you'll probably recognize James Chester, but, you know, he's the one who keeps us all straight, and keeps us rolling in the whole city, like literally keeping everything rolling in the city. But we had quite a problem back in March of this year, where our compost trommel screen, which screens the compost before you can sell it, it, the engine blew up. Is that right, James?
Yes, correct.
All right, see, he'll keep me straight. So, in any way, the, the engine was not to be just tweaked, it was, it needed to actually be rebuilt, and instead, we can't take the whole huge trommel screen, 'cause it would probably not fit in this room. We couldn't take it to, you know, like a mechanic, and it would cost a really a lot of money to try to get a contractor that's a mechanic to come and rebuild that engine. And when these, these gentlemen said, "We think we can rebuild that engine," it was amazing. They ordered the parts, and I'll let James talk about all the parts, but, you know, turbos and rods and pistons and, and all, but it was a really difficult rebuild, because the engine's in a very difficult place to get to, but these guys, they worked out in the field, and they rebuilt that piece of equipment, and we got our compost facility back in production, and I'm just really grateful for, to them, but also, you know, they amaze me, and I just wanted to let everyone know, you know, how wonderful they are, but thank you for this opportunity to recognize them.
Karen, I have a question. What was the estimated cost savings of them doing?
Well, you know, I should've, actually, we didn't even call a contractor to find out a mechanic to come in to do that, so I'm not even sure, but maybe someone like James.
The engine usually runs around 13,000 to 16,000 dollars. We pretty much done it within probably $2,000.
Wow.
I was just saying, we were almost on time. You know, I had your neck of time. All right, we ready?
Yes.
You better smile. Smile. I'm gonna pick a look, look, my...
He's not right.
Can I go ahead and give you a hand?
Yes, you can.
Is that you?
Yes.
You already shook your hand. We're gonna need something, so we're gonna have to know what we're doing. Thank you for everything you did. City, probably let me know how hard you're doing.
And Eric, you don't go away after you've said Rod.
Come on.
About to get a group picture, okay?
You wanna have me hit?
You're smiling, you don't have to. Oh, look, is that thing getting good? That's gonna open and everything. Make it look efficient. All right, right here. He has quit smiling on it. They are gonna make it. Come on, and remember, smile. And be close, love it, love it.
Next, if I can get Chief Waverly and Tim Collier, please come up. And Chief, could you just give us just a brief summary of the nomination?
Well, thank you, Council, for having us. You know, I'm very passionate, very excited about the training ground. And we worked very hard last year to get that going and get it up and get it running. And we were able to put things together in time to do a huge class that we had the instructors that came in from Indiana and taught. And Wayne Community College came on board and helped us with the financing of that and took care of the instructors. And this is a very highly costly specialized class that we were able to do at basically no cost to the city. But one of the things is we need to do a temporary classroom. We need to have visual aid. We need to have availability to do some classroom training in that. And Engineer Collier, been with the department for nineteen years, he helped several days while on duty down at the training ground doing grading, doing wiring, anything he was asked to do, like several of our employees have done. But Tim came on his days off and that was what impressed me is he took time on his days off to come down and wire our classroom up so that we could get visual aid. Not only did he do that, but he donated some of the equipment that we use so we would have, be able to run videos and be able to hear it. And, you know, not, a lot of people will come and help, but it takes special people who buy in to what you're trying to do and will even donate to it. And so that's why I nominated Tim and he's been a very valuable employee with the City of Goldsboro. I can tell you a lot of things that Tim has been good at, but just being willing to buy in to what we were trying to do is what I was thankful for and that's why I nominated.
Thank you, Chief.
You gotta hug me, too. I just wanna say, I just wanna thank you very much. This fire thing is, you know, very dear to our heart, but y'all saved us hundreds of thousands of lives, so we have to love you. I know it's used all the time, it's a great facility and it's great to see y'all out there doing that. Where's my plug? Gotta get it, let's smile, let's each smile. Hold, hold, wait, wait.
Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you, thank you.
Okay, with that, we got public hearings and the first public hearing is Z416 and I'm not gonna sit down because.
I'm asking Mr. Allen to reclusive himself from the hearing.
I second that motion.
Any discussion? All of us say aye. Motion carries. You got it?
Yep.
Don't mess it up.
Good evening, Councilmen. Item B is Z416, David Perry. The property is located on the west side of North George Street between Vine Street and Holly Street. The property has a frontage of approximately one hundred feet, a depth of approximately one hundred feet, and a total area of approximately ten thousand square feet or point two-three acres. The applicant has requested change of zone from General Business Office to Office and Institutional One for the northernmost portion of the property, which would include approximately half of the existing building and parking lot. As indicated on the map in the hatched area, that is the area of the property that is in question for rezoning. And you will see that it is surrounded to the north, south, east, and west by general business. The property has been vacant for some time and was previously occupied by Smith Hardware. If rezoned to Office and Institutional One, the applicant proposes to upfit a portion of the building for the use as a school. Prior to permitting, site and landscape plans will have to be submitted and approved by the Planning Commission and City Council. At that time, a determination of required parking and landscaping will be made. The city's comprehensive land use plan designates this property for commercial development, which is indicated in red. And this request would not be compatible with the city's land use plan. The property can be accessed by two existing curb cuts along North George Street. City and water and sanitary sewer lines are available to serve the subject property and the subject property is not located within a special hazard flood area. Staff's recommendation at this time is to concur with the applicant, which has requested to continue the public hearing until August 15th, 2016, as they are exploring the options available for the building and are not prepared for any final action at this time. This is aerial photography of the property. Again, the portion of the building, Front George Street, and it's just half there you see in the red area. Again, this is a front elevation of the building. Any questions?
It looks a lot better since it was painted.
It surely does.
This is a public hearing. Anyone want to speak in favor or against it? Please come up and give the clerk your name. Seeing none, this public hearing is closed. We'll move on to the next one. Somebody get Chuck... Or Mayor Allen, I'm sorry.
I guess with that, we've got item CU816, Phoenix T LLC?
Yes. CU816, Phoenix T LLC is located on the east side of US 117 South between Arrington Bridge Road and South George Street. The property is indicated in the red area. The applicant requests a conditional use permit to allow the operation of a place of entertainment with no ABC permits. The place of entertainment would include a game room in conjunction with an existing restaurant. In 2003, the City Council approved a special use permit to allow a place of entertainment with a game room at this location. However, this use was never developed although the site had been operated as a restaurant in several different names since then. It is now being operated as Big Gems Pizza. The site contains an eight thousand four hundred and fifty-six square foot building and a parking area containing a total of twenty-six parking spaces. Based on the seats provided within the restaurant, a total of nineteen parking spaces are required for the restaurant use. With an area of three thousand six hundred square feet to be used as the game room, an additional eighty-seven parking spaces are required for a total of a hundred and six parking spaces. The applicant contends that with a maximum of twenty-five games and the fact that customers patronizing the restaurant will also use the game room, much less parking should be required. The game room is intended to be an accessory to the restaurant and will not serve as a separate use. A modification of the parking requirement will be necessary. One curb cut provides access to the site from US 117 and the site is surrounded by an existing chain link fence. The hours of operation are 10:30 a.m. to 9:00 p.m. Sunday through Thursday and 10:30 a.m. to 10:00 p.m. Monday and Saturday. There's a maximum of six employees per shift. At the time the restaurant occupied the building, staff required the appropriate landscaping be installed, including street trees and buffers. This is a front elevation of the existing restaurant known as Big Gems Pizza. And again, a portion of that is being requested to be used as a game room. At this time, no action is necessary. Planning Commission will have a recommendation for Council's meeting on August 1st, 2016.
Thank you, Jennifer. Any questions from the Council, Jennifer? All right, if not, this is a public hearing for CU816 where Phoenix T LLC requests a conditional use permit. Would anybody like to speak for or against? Anybody like to speak? I see no one like to speak. We'll close this public hearing and we'll move to item D, CU916, Phoenix.
Excuse me, Mayor, can I go back to the mayor pro temp? The first public hearing, can I go back to mayor pro temp to continue it versus closing it?
Yes.
If somebody would make a motion to do that, that would allow us to continue.
I second the motion.
Go ahead.
All right.
I make the motion that we continue it until August.
I second, I second the motion.
And if you vote, that would be great.
Oh, all those in favor say aye. Motion carries.
Thank you. Okay, we're gonna move to item D.
Item D, CU916, is also coming to you from Phoenix T LLC. This property is also located on the east side of US 117 between Arrington Bridge Road and South George Street. The applicant requests a conditional use permit to allow the operation of a place of entertainment with no ABC permits. The place of entertainment would be operated as a laser tag facility. The applicant previously received a conditional use permit to operate as an internet cafe in 2013. It operated as such until last year when all internet cafes in Wayne County were ordered closed by the local district attorney. In conjunction with the previous conditional use permit, the applicant installed fifty-two paved parking spaces and landscaping. Two modifications were previously approved as follows. A modification of the rear yard buffer adjacent to the railroad tracks and a modification of the vehicular surface buffer and street tree requirement to allow placement elsewhere due to existing pavement. The applicant indicates that the existing building will contain a laser tag area of approximately one thousand one hundred square feet, along with office, storage, and restrooms. These uses will require a total of thirty-four parking spaces. As indicated previously, there are fifty-two paved spaces on the property. Hours of operation for the site will be from 10 a.m. to 2 a.m. Monday through Sunday. Two employees will be associated with the operation. Again, you see the aerial photography on the map showing the building as well as the parking that has been paved. And this is a front elevation of the building. At this time, no action is necessary. Planning Commission will have a recommendation for Council at their meeting August 1st, 2016.
All right, any questions, Jennifer? Okay, if not, this is a public hearing. CU19, would I request an additional permit, additional, conditional use permit? Would anybody like to speak for or against? All right, if not, we will close this public hearing and that will excuse our hard work and planning commission. And thank you for what you're doing and we certainly invite you to stay for the entire meeting if you would like. I guess that's a no. Thank y'all for what you do. Okay, so with that, Mr. Manager, we have the consent agenda?
Yes, sir. Mayor and Council, your consent agenda was rather lengthy. It consists of items E through double A. Item F, related to pickleball, we had delayed the action on that until August. We didn't present any bids this evening. And item T, did allow a write-in, write-out to the store that's proposed on Wayne Memorial. So again, items E through double A.
All right. Any discussion? Move to adopt.
Second.
Roll call that, please.
Mayor Allen?
Yes, ma'am.
Mayor Martin, I thought?
Yes.
Councilmember Williams?
Yes.
Councilmember Ronway?
Yes.
Councilmember Stevens?
Yes.
Councilmember Foster?
Yes.
Councilmember Mann?
Yes. Consent agenda passes. Items requiring individual action, we have none. We'll move to the city manager's report.
None this evening, sir.
City Attorney?
No report.
Mayor and Council members, we got a resolution, express appreciation surrendered by Perry Horn. Let me get to that real quick. And I'll read this real quick. Is Perry here? Okay. Resolution, express appreciation for service rendered by Perry Horn as an employee of the City of Goldsboro for more than eight years. Where Perry retired on July 1, 2016, as a water plant superintendent with the Public Health Department at the Water Treatment Plant of the City of Goldsboro with more than eight years of service. Perry began his career on April 23, 2008, as a water plant superintendent with the Water Treatment Plant where he has served until his retirement. Whereas Perry has proven himself to be a dedicated and efficient public servant who has gained admiration and respect of his fellow workers and the citizens of the City of Goldsboro. Whereas as Mayor, the City Council of the City of Goldsboro desires on behalf of themselves, other city officials and employees, and the citizens of the City of Goldsboro of expressing to Perry their deep appreciation and gratitude for the service rendered by him to the city over the years. Now therefore, it will be resolved by the Mayor and City Council of Goldsboro that we express to Perry our deep appreciation and gratitude for the dedicated service rendered during his tenure to the City of Goldsboro. We offer Perry our best wishes for success, happiness, prosperity, and good health in his future endeavors. This resolution shall be incorporated to the official minutes of the City of Goldsboro and shall be in full force and effect from this to 18th day of July, 2016. Offer that resolution for adoption.
Move to adopt.
Second.
Any discussion? All of us say aye. Cat, I'll pass. All right, so the next thing we have is the 33rd proclamation for the 33rd Annual Night Out, 2016. The National Association of Town Watch is sponsoring a unique nationwide crime and drug prevention program on August 2nd, 2016 called National Night Out. Whereas the 33rd Annual National Night Out provides a unique opportunity for the City of Goldsboro to join forces with thousands of other communities across the country in promoting cooperative police community crime and drug prevention efforts. Whereas the City of Goldsboro plays a vital role in assisting the City of Goldsboro Police Department and the Wayne County Sheriff's Department through joint crime and drug prevention efforts in the city and county and is supporting National Night Out 2016 locally. Whereas it is essential that all citizens of the City of Goldsboro be aware of the importance of crime prevention programs and the impact that their participation can have on reducing crime and drug abuse in Goldsboro and Wayne County. Whereas police community partnerships, neighborhood safety and awareness and cooperation are important things of the National Night Out program. Now therefore, I check Allen, Mayor of the City of Goldsboro, to hereby proclaim August 2, August 2nd, 2016, is the 33rd Annual National Night Out in the City of Goldsboro, North Carolina, and do hereby call upon all citizens of the City of Goldsboro to join National Association of Town Watch in supporting the 33rd National Night Out. So I would strongly encourage all our citizens to come. This will usually have a good participation. It's usually very hot, but in lieu of everything going on in our country today, I would encourage everyone to come out and show us some support, not only for our police and sheriff and all that, but for our community as well. So I would just ask all our citizens to please come out and set Herman Park Center, I mean Herman Park?
Yes.
Okay, all right. Okay, so that's all we have under that. And so now we'll move to council member comments and I think we'll start with Mr. Hamm?
Yes, I'd like to bring again the attention to our citizens about the service that our city employees give to the community above and beyond the call of duty, as evidenced by these Golden Star awards that we see periodically. Tonight, we saw an example of three employees who, or actually more than three, but several employees who took it upon themselves to show their initiative, to use their skills to save taxpayers' money, to work additional hours beyond their normal schedules, and this is done over and over again. The public's not really aware of that. It's not publicized in the newspaper, but this is a platform whereby hopefully those that watch this meeting see this examples that we are made aware of time and time again. And I hope that the viewers out there see these awards and know that there are dedicated people working for this city.
Is that it?
Yes, sir.
Ms. Foster?
No comment.
Ms. Takeoff?
Just to reiterate on what Mr. Hamm said, I don't know if any of you know, but the Fire Department built a training center that if we put it out for bid, would be over four hundred thousand dollars. And they did it for less than seventy-five thousand, probably a lot less. And as you heard on the screener, that it would've cost us eighteen, twenty thousand and did it for less than two. You know, these are people who are committed. These are our employees and I thank the world of them. And most of them do an excellent job. At the same time, I'd like to reinforce my support for the Police Department and how much I appreciate them for what they do.
Hello?
That's it.
Mr. Williams?
Do you want to speak to Mark? Let Mark go first.
Mr. Stevens?
Okay, well, I was just gonna speak on a couple of things. One, I wanted to speak for Ms. Carolyn. She's a young lady with, it was once with the city and working with the council and then she became a citizen after she graduated. Had a real thought and process, wanted to try to get that peace walk and community outreach movement together. It was supposed to happen this Friday between four and six. And just really working hard to try to push everyone together and make sure that everyone in the city is unified. I thought that was a really wonderful movement that she was trying to get going throughout the city. Then also, I want to speak on, in light of all the things that we've seen in the news lately, I know they're completely and utterly horrifying. Some just locally and domestically to our nation and then other abroad. And I think as a nation, we need to realize what we have and try to work together throughout our differences. And yes, there are some things that are not right at all with our law enforcement and our, you know, judicial system. But if we come together and work together, then it will start to become better. It's another one of the things, and I want to show like major support for our Police Department here. Chief West and his staff works really hard to try to keep our citizens together. Though we've had several losses throughout our citizen's council and through my, throughout my district and throughout the city of youth, I know that it's very heartwarming. And I've spoken with Ms. Selena Bennett and tried to work hard with her and the teen court to try to let the teens know that there's another way and there's more, you know, things out there than what is being pushed onto you by peer pressure. There's, you know, there's sports, you know, we have sports, but there's also other things that you can use and that is your mind. And as long as you're expanding your mind, that no one can ever take that from you. They can talk about you, they can ask, like, what is the word I'm looking for? Oh, thank you, thank you. Ostracize you. I can't even think of it right. My mind's going blank. Ostracize you, you know, completely walk away from you as a friend, but as long as you have your mind and they expanding it and using that for a direct purpose and positive purpose, you can always strive to go and go past your surrounding environment and do great things in the world. So I wanted to say that. And then lastly, I just want to say to the gentleman who was, you know, speaking here in regards to the property, also, I know that you came from Taylor Street and that coming throughout my district. I know exactly what you're talking about. I feel for you directly. Unfortunately, like as the mayor is saying, the city manager... Unfortunately, like as the mayor is saying, the city manager, those properties that you see are directly owned by several people, and then some people that they own by, they're probably friends or relatives of people you know. And unfortunately, these things will, you know, cannot happen overnight, and the city cannot really effectively change them right, directly. But what, you know, can be done in regards to that is what the mayor was saying, is that we can tear them down, but as far as going about fixing them up, we can talk to the city, the manager, the property owner, and all the ones that will manage these properties and try to get them, but if they choose not to, that's the thing. So I think we need, like I said, all collectively, what I'm trying to say is we together as a community, need to come together and say, let's try to work away, a different way around this than going and saying, oh, this is this problem, or this is this problem. Let's work away and say, hey, this is all our problem, we work together and fix that. So that's my comments for the day. So thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Stevens. Mr. Ronway?
No comment.
All right. Mr. Williams, your turn.
I would be remiss if I didn't take the time to acknowledge and address the sense of balance that is taking place in our nation in the past few weeks, specifically the murders of Alton Sterling and Philando Castile and five police officers in Dallas. In the wake of all these tragedies, marches and rallies calling for justice and peace are taking place nationwide, including several scheduled for Goldsboro. While I encourage you all to get out and peacefully voice your concerns, I want to also stress that our involvement, participation must extend beyond that. As citizens, we have responsibilities to do our part to ensure our youth, fellow community have access to programs, people, solutions that encourage them to be productive members of society. And also wanna send my condolences to Ms. Sonya Darden, who lost her life tragically a few days ago. Terrific. Thank you.
That it?
Yes, sir.
Thank you, sir. All right, I got just a couple of things. One, I think I do want to say, kind of following up on what Councilman Williams said, and I think in lieu of everything going on in our country and our nation, I think one thing that we need to pay attention to is, and it was said tonight, and I hear it pretty much every day, and that is all lives matter. All lives matter. I think it's really important. I'm asking that all our citizens, that we practice humility, we practice understanding, we practice compassion for those that might not act like you or might not look just like you. This is a time for us to communicate. It's time for us to be inclusive, because we don't want Goldsboro, or we don't want it happening in Goldsboro, what we see happening around in other communities. And to keep that from happening, we're gonna have to work together, we're gonna have to be a partnership, and we're gonna have to talk together. And so I would just encourage anyone, if you don't want to talk to me, talk to the manager, talk to one of the council members, but we need to be talking. If there's things that you think we are not doing, or we ought to be doing, or we can help do, we're your council, we're here to do that. So I would want to encourage all our citizens. Kind of on that, and kind of out of our community cares group that we have, last night, Chaco and I had the opportunity to go with Apostle Dawson, and he had several preachers preaching and praying, as you just said, at the Alpha Omega Church. And I have to be pretty honest, I've never been to anything quite like that. They were laying down, they were doing handstands, they were doing kneeling, it's some preaching like I've never seen, I'm just gonna be honest with you. But it was very effective, and I was really, really honored that I got to be invited to that and be a part of that. I think there was a really good message of that. Chaco, I don't know if you want to add to it, but those are the kind of things we need. We need our community coming together, doing those kind of things. So anytime we can participate, we would like to, you just gotta let us know. And with that, I just, just want everybody to communicate, because we're all here to be on the same team. With that, we have a closed session, item?
Property acquisition. Yes, sir.
So I need someone to make a motion that we go into closed session for property acquisition.
I make the motion, we go into closed session for property acquisition.
Second.
Any discussion? All officers, aye? We're gonna move into closed session to the next room?
Um, whichever you want to do it. We can act close to leave, or you can move next door.
You're the manager.
Let's say let's go next door.
No, we gotta go. We gotta come back.
No, we don't have to come back.